And if we could all stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have roll call for finance. Absent, term one, here.
Here.
Maloney.
Here.
Strong. Excuse.
Excuse, okay. And then for board.
Rowan.
Here.
A moment.
Sounded different than it.
Hardingger.
Jasper.
Insano.
Present.
Maloney.
Here.
Mylan, here. Sagami.
Here.
Okay, then item five, approval of minutes of previous finance committee meeting, of the pleasure.
No approval. I'll second.
On the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed?
So.
Aye. Lisa Jasper.
Okay, is there anyone on Zoom being by computer?
Yes.
How many? I mean, quite a few.
It's all staff.
It's all staff and Jasper.
And Jamie.
Okay.
Just so we kind of know, okay.
And then, anyone by phone?
Jasper's on via phone.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna do this a little differently here, and Jamie's kind of helping us. We're gonna go into public comments, and we're, most of you are here for the same thing. And so, I asked Jamie to help me here. We're all gonna be, you're all gonna be talking basically about the same thing, I believe. So, I've got four of them up here, and maybe some other ones still want to talk, but in the interest of what this meeting was supposed to be about, about the budget and stuff, and the finances and stuff. We think we got this figured out, so, listening to Jamie here. So, I've got these in order here with Lisa Letterman. Just, just a hand quick, okay? Then we have an Ashley Bishop, okay? And then we have a Vicky Williams, okay? I know Tom, I know you guys signed one, but I think we'll get it covered. If, if what these three say, and it doesn't cover what you want to talk about, then you can certainly say a few things. We'd like to keep it to five minutes, but Jamie assures me we can do it in two minutes apiece. I'm just teasing a little bit, because we, we think, we think we got this figured out, so. Yeah, okay, so Lisa Letterman first, right? Okay. If, if you could come up to the podium a little bit, and just state your name and address for the record, I would appreciate, we'd all appreciate.
Can I sit here?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Lisa Letterman, I'm the executive director for the Humane Society of Marathon County, and I address 9540 Sand Hill Drive.
Okay.
So I just wanted to attend this meeting on behalf of the Humane Society of Marathon County and in support of the village pursuing options related to stray cat services. Whether that is with my organization or in some other route, I'm, I'm just happy that it's being considered. I do feel that the lack of services in this area for the last years have undone so much work that was put in, especially in cleaning up the trailer park areas that tend to be kind of our problem areas for whatever reason. So I do think now we have years of work, years of work ahead of us in catching up from what was left behind. And as a position of the shelter, it has been very difficult for me and for staff in dealing with residents in the village who have not had services, because the way that the shelter is operating, that responsibility is put on the municipality for non-dog strays, that's what we refer to the mess, anything that's not a dog, so it's covered by the county. So we have done our best to try to assist Village of Weston residents, while also not trying to put in jeopardy all the other contracts we have for services. And that has been a really, like, fine line to toe. So again, whether it's with our organization or something else, I'm just in support of some resolution for these cats, for your residents, and I do think it is an issue of public health when we are getting these overrun areas, and everyone's kind of turning a blind eye. So however, we can be a part of the solution. I'm just here to say that we are, and to look forward to what you will look to do to service the human and non-human residents of Weston.
This is normally, you know, your comments and then nothing from the board here, but I, I just need to say, so we're also talking about the city of Schofield and the town of Weston, but tonight, that's right, but, because, because we used to cover it with the police department, and it came out of their budget. So I, I actually was part of that years ago, when, when the, the police side and the three communities just decided we're at like twenty-six, twenty-seven grand, and we said that we just can't do it no more, it just keeps going up. And we had some people trapping really hard, and I don't know what it is, one eighty-five a cat or something like that, so. So, not realizing, when I'm hearing some of this funding tonight, talking to Jessica with our finance tool, this, what we're gonna be talking about tonight is strictly Weston, not, not the city of Schofield and not the village or the town of Weston.
Well, in my experience, the village of Weston is, you know, the bulk of it.
Right, right, and, and yeah. I only get the phone calls on the village of Weston, so I'm very happy to be talking about it. So I just, I kind of went, I, I said a little bit to Jamie here beforehand too, so, okay. And I, I think, I think we got this pretty much worked out already, Jamie and Jessica's done some work prior to this, so. So you, you good?
I'm good, that's all I need.
Okay, so the next one is.
Ashley Bishop.
Yep, Ashley Bishop, yep, thank you. Just the name and address for the record, please.
Ashley Bishop, twelve oh three North Fifth Street, I am the humane officer for Ever, contracted with the Ever Special Police Department. So, first of all, I want to say, I agree with one thing that Lisa has said, we have seen an increased number of cats in problem areas. We've had numerous people that have called me, hey, I got this cat, I'm sorry, I can't do anything about it. I actually have here numbers for, from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty of how many cats, correction, how many non-dog strays were taken. Twenty eighteen, we had astronomical amount of rabbits that were abandoned. So we had twenty-two rabbits taken in cat year. These animals need someplace to go, they are somebody's pet, they are potentially loved by somebody. And I spoke with Jamie earlier, and with the funding coming from the licensing, if I had been a member of, or, or a resident of the Village of Weston, and found out that I'm being required to pay a license fee for a cat, but now, should anything happen to my cat, we're not gonna provide services, we have a humane officer, we have somebody who handles animal control issues, but my cat doesn't count, but you're taking the money for that license, I would be incredibly frustrated as a resident. It is a matter of, when Lisa's talking health, I want you guys to kind of understand what that actually means. We have rabies control, the whole reason you license your animal is so that we can verify that rabies vaccines are completed, because rabies is a one hundred percent fatal disease. There's a rare ten people worldwide that have survived getting rabies. You have your various parasites, your toxoplasmosis, your roundworm, your hookworm, your tapeworms, these are all gotten by cats that are out roaming, that come into wild contact with wildlife, they now have it, somebody goes, oh, this cat is hanging out by my door. They open up their screen door, their cat talks to their indoor cat, well now, we've got fleas and things, you know, we're transmitting diseases that way. And that's gonna be with the friendly cats, that's gonna be the ones that somebody is potentially looking for. And they're going to be looking at places like the Humane Society. Some people may be able to look online, a lot of it is social media right now, but if the person who hides the cat is in, I'm, I'm just gonna put it out there, an elderly person who doesn't have access to social media, well, how are they supposed to notify anybody to get a photo out there to be able to have the family find their pet that they've been looking for? We do it for the dogs, for the same reasons, for the health and the well-being. We also don't want to be having animals hit on the side of the road, I've had several cats this year alone, that I've picked up that have been hit on the side of the road, and they were microchipped. Well, if somebody had found them and we had been able to take them into the Humane Society, that cat could still be alive today. So I absolutely would say we, we need to have this contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are you interested in the paperwork with the numbers that I have?
No, I, I, you, I don't think you have to sell us, you know, and I'm, I'm glad for, I'm glad for the information, but I, I think there's been quite a bit of work done ahead of time here, so.
And I'm here for any questions.
Okay, Jessica, just, what, what is the money we bring in for takes, the takes?
About twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand cat and dog?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, what would be the break?
I don't remember offhand.
I don't want to offend anybody here and say that we're getting ninety percent dog, you know, so if we're getting ninety percent cats, so.
We do have more dogs.
The time I asked, it was historically, people don't license their cats.
Oh, historically, they don't license cats.
Usually they don't, because they're indoors.
The last number I got was like three to four hundred cats, and it was like nine hundred dogs.
Oh, wow, holy crap.
But I don't, I mean, the.
You're in Weston?
That's just Weston, yeah.
Wow, okay.
And that comes into, you know, there's, I host an event for free rabies vaccine with the requirement of a license, you know. I have been doing my best to get more publicity on that, so that people know, because it's a free rabies vaccine. So I don't know if there's any way of getting assistance in, in trying to make that more public knowledge and getting more people involved in that.
And that is something that we can work with Rachel, and Valerie is so passionate about so many things, I'm, she's also passionate about animals. She's got alpacas and all kinds of stuff out on her farm, so. Yeah.
So, I mean, we do have the services out there to try to bring more of that revenue in, and it's it is very difficult being the only humane officer for basically a population of sixty thousand, if you take all my jurisdictions. And so, I can't say that I can commit to getting one thing, but finding a way to go through and enforce some of the licensing, you know. I'm being completely honest, but it has been a little bit difficult to work with in that respect, at least I have found them to be. But finding a way that we can accurately record, you know, who's actually licensing, who needs a follow-up letter that says, hey, you did a license, let's get it done.
Is there a different agency that works better?
We and Loser, I'm not saying that this is a great option, but we are using the vault. So, this is something that I know you guys have access to.
Red Mountain has a new third party, I was just curious if you, what's with that one?
No, I, I do Ever Special.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And our last one is Vicky.
Vicky, well, yeah.
And, and just, Vicky also passed out this to the board, so, and Pamela, I think you have a copy too, okay? All right.
I've got thirty-two oh four box scale.
Just in case. Thank you.
Um, in July and August alone, there were seventeen kittens, three different mother cats, two huge tomcats crating all these babies, and several cats, I think about twenty-four cats that were of various ages and stages in life. And these are just the cats that I saw in my cul-de-sac neighborhood area. There were six deaths, three of which were a mother cat trying to carry her kittens across the street when she ran out into traffic. That wasn't pretty. Between my neighbor and I, we have spent just about a thousand dollars in the last two months, trying to help this situation. Doing nothing in this area has resulted in this overpopulation problem. Trying to rescue all feral cats and find homes is impossible due to the numbers and lack of socialization. Removing or relocating them invites new, unneutered, unspayed cats to come and move into their place. Because when these cats live in colonies in the neighborhood, it's, it's almost as if they each have a little spot. And if you take them out, somebody else comes back in to fill that spot. The solution to this is TNR, trap, neuter, return. And it's the only, it's the only method proven to be humane and effective in controlling free roaming cat population growth. A TNR program permanently reduces the number of cats in the area. It lowers shelter intake and euthanasia. It reduces the spread of disease. And the big thing for me is that the returned cats that are spayed and neutered, they guard the territory, they, they fill their spot when you return them to where they came from, which means it discourages brand-new, unneutered and unspayed cats from moving in and beginning a whole new cycle of overpopulation. On average, feral cats, some studies say they live about six years, and other studies say anywhere from two to five years. So eventually, they're gonna die off. We taxpayers and citizens cannot afford to take this on ourselves. We need to partner in contract with a legitimate, close to our home entity, which to me would be the Humane Society. The Humane Society will keep accurate financial records and TNR program records, as opposed to situations I have seen in the past, with private citizens claiming to be with rescued groups, et cetera. It costs about a hundred dollars now, I've called the different shelters to find out, hey, how much does it cost to spare a neuter or cat? And it costs about a hundred dollars to spay and neuter, and that's low cost. So, asking a hundred and eighty-five dollars a cat to me is reasonable. Lincoln County charges the town of Maine two hundred and fifty dollars a cat, and they gladly pay it, they pay it. That's really all that I have, we need a TNR program here so badly.
Do we have a TNR program? So these one eighty-five, they pick them up, you bring them in, is TNR gonna happen or not?
TNR needs to be addressed within the ordinances, because our ordinance does not allow for a TNR.
Okay, so the one eighty-five, you're just collecting the cat, and then what happens?
It goes to the Humane Society under a strangle for four to seven days. And then if nobody comes and reclaims the cat, the cat then goes up for adoption. If the cat is reclaimed, the shelter does charge a fee for that, that comes back to us and basically comes off the top at the end of the year.
And that one eighty-five is essentially because the shelter, now I'm responsible for that cat. And we are in a community, and the shelter believes, you know, years ago, it was like, oh, euthanasia rates were really high at the shelter, we're talking eight years ago, we're in a community, we want to save lives, we're, it's basically, now this is your cat, so you're paying the shelter to spay and neuter, prepare that cat for adoption, keep it for, open it, and, you know, we don't have time limits. We do have a barn cat program in which we do take unsocialized or feral cats, spayed and neutered, that took their ears and the whole thing, into areas where there are not limitations, but, you know, like the city of Wausau did amend their ordinances to allow for TNR. The other part of that equation is, there needs, in Bees and Wausau, there needs to be like a caregiver per cat. Not just like, oh, I spayed and neutered him, and I put him out. Someone is still responsible ultimately for that colony, as the caretakers provide food and water, adequate shelter and medical care as needed. But yes, it's, that fee is because that cat is gonna stay with me, and I'm gonna figure out what to do with it if an owner doesn't come forward.
Good.
So, one thing I would like to mention, and, and I'm not sure, Lisa, if this is a possibility with the Humane Society, you know, if we were able to do TNR, but just this, just this last week, the Humane Society was gracious enough, because I called and begged them. I had a female cat in my yard that was so pregnant, she could hardly walk. And I said, please, can I bring her in, because she's gonna have a bunch of kittens, and they're gonna be in my yard. So they graciously took her. Four days later, she had six kittens. We had brought in another cat before this one, because we didn't trap her, we trapped just a different cat, and they were nice enough to take that cat in. So that male cat got neutered. He stayed with them, I think, for about a week. And then we had the option to come back and get him if he appeared to be feral, meaning he's not socialized, he's never gonna be comfortable living in someone's home. We had the option from them to come back and release this guy into our neighborhood. Because there are food sources, people in the trailer park are feeding, I put food out because they were starving, they have water twenty-four seven. People everywhere are trying to help them. So I, I think if we could do that, that would be a wonderful option, at least in my cul-de-sac where we have this huge problem. If we could live trap them, bring them to the Humane Society to be fixed, and then re-release them back to where they came from. Because again, if you don't put them back where they came from and they're feral, somebody else is going to come in and take that place. And I think if we could just get them all spayed and neutered, we could end this big mess that we have by the trailer park and by the cul-de-sac. But I, I'm not sure, because I haven't had a chance to talk to the Humane Society, I, I don't know if you could partner up with us to do that. You know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure about the logistics of that, but one thing I do know is if we're going to ask the Humane Society to help us, they need funding. They need funding, and, and everybody else around us funds their, their Humane Societies to take care of this issue. We do not, it's, that's not humane, what are we doing as a community? So, um, also, this, the TNR program, it, it's gonna save tax dollars, because it mobilizes volunteers, it's, it's free help. I'll go out there and I'll live trap, and I will transport them, or my neighbor will transport them to the Humane Society. Because we're not asking anybody else to do it. Again, that would be something that would have to be figured out with the Humane Society, if they were willing to work with us to do it. But I just know that we need funding.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you. At, at this point, we could move right away into the funding, but if you tell me, I mean, Jessica, you talked to me a little bit before the meeting, on some room tax dollars, and then also licensing numbers. And then we, we just, during the process, we have to set some kind of a limit you were talking about, you think, okay? Okay, so with the numbers that we're hearing, what are we hearing, up to date, is sixty-three this, right now, we're at? Did somebody say sixty-three?
Approximately sixty-five cats, you had.
Up to this date this year?
Well, in the last contract, is Lisa, is that correct? Yeah, that was from the last contract.
Right, so even, I, but we have room there, so if you took that and went, you know, hundred, hundred and twenty, it seems, it sounds like we still have room in the, with our, our numbers, right? Or no? No, 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 we would never do nine hundred, three hundred, no, those are all licensed. But, um, what did you say our numbers were right now for?
Around twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand?
And possibly another five from room tax.
And then another five for room tax, yeah. And the room tax, just so everybody knows, it's from the thirty percent that comes in, you know, for the village and, and its own use, it's not the tourism dollars. It's not the forty-five that goes to the CBB, it's not the twenty-five that stays in Weston, it's from that front thirty that comes to municipality that, you know, like we're doing with the pool and different things too, so, just so you understand where that's coming from.
And that would cover about ninety-one.
Yeah.
Non-dog.
Yeah. Last year, we gave all that to Michael, and God knows what we did with it. Anyway, I'm just teasing, I'm just teasing, it's, no, I shouldn't do it, so Tom.
The cat.
Yeah, so it, have, have everybody covered what you want to talk about? Okay, all right, I am gonna keep this and submit it in, so, all right. Yep, you're welcome. Um, so we think we got this covered, for what we're talking about tonight, I just don't want no surprises, right? So.
So we can go ahead and request that the non-dogs.
So when we get into, when we get into that side, then we'll have that numbers, I just don't want you to leave tonight, and then wait a minute, you didn't do what you said you were gonna do, so, there's gonna be no surprise here, we're not gonna overpromise and underdeliver. It's, it's gonna be funded, yes? Yes, okay, all right, good, all right.
Should we go to the review and discussion, just to, at this point, stray cat funding?
Well, we could, but we kind of just did. If we said we're gonna do it, we're not gonna actually take any, this is review and discussion only for the budget tonight.
Right.
And so we're not gonna actually act on this or vote on this until November, before Thanksgiving is when we actually put the budget out. That's when the funding will be in there, so.
The funding is, I mean, we have the revenues.
Right.
The board deciding to allocate the revenues and sign a contract with somebody to take.
When did they do that?
On oxtrays.
What's that?
We would be doing that in November.
We, we would be doing that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, the board did approve cats yet.
But we would be.
Food, not in dogs.
Right, okay, so if we go to the section in number seven, where I'm seeing, is we'd be talking just the way we are now. We can't actually do anything, was not on the agenda.
I'm just asking if we want to go to closed session right now, or if we're gonna discuss the stray cat funding with the finance.
Well, we kind of just did, under public, under public comment, you know, we, we really didn't go to seven.
Let's formally talk about seven, now if anybody's got any questions.
Okay, so.
You guys don't have to stay here for.
Move to seven.
Okay.
I mean, it's really exciting.
Right. Then we can go into, because the finance.
So, okay, okay, so we're gonna, we're moving into seven, educational presentation and reports. Stray cat funding, so now let's just kind of repeat what we're gonna do, go ahead.
So, in the budget, I am going to create an expenditure line and put a dollar amount in for a contract with Marathon County Humane Society.
Okay.
And then we'll have a transfer in from the room tax to general fund for about five grand.
Okay.
Is there a total dollar amount that the board wants? I mean, we're, we're throwing out numbers, but do we wanna just set a dollar amount right now?
Originally, tonight I was hearing fifteen, but now we're talking closer to seventeen, right?
It depends.
Yeah. I mean.
I can't guarantee, like, license revenue is very, it's, it's been going down, and it'd be awesome if this year we could take on a really promoting the licensing of dogs, if we can somehow get that out the public more, because they've been going down the last five years, people haven't been licensing, so.
Well, they don't hear about it, they don't think they have to.
Right, we do that patata, and it's just, I, I think they need to hear something from the village saying, hey, get your animals licensed, it's to benefit everyone.
And now we can also sell it, it's not just a license, but now it's gonna help pay.
I think that'll be really helpful.
For the Humane Side, okay, yeah.
What were the dollars used for before? So, all the dollars for the.
It was absorbed in the general fund, so.
You can specifically put in a bucket, just use four pets.
Correct.
And prior to this, when it was actually stopped, no, no, hold on, hold on, it was actually in the police budget.
Yes.
So the MPD was paying for this.
Right.
And that's why it came to a head, it was, our bucket was just left alone, and the MPD side was paying for it. Well, being on the joint finance with the police department, along with Mayor Hohn and Chairman Olson with the villa, the town, it, it got to, like, I, it was in the twenties is where it was, and it just kept climbing, and we just said, we just can't keep doing this. I'm, I'm not kidding you, I guess I didn't even realize that this was even part of it, that we could have went this way, each community doing their own. So.
What happens right now, so if there's a cat right outside here, today, because there's no new budget adopted yet, it's not November, what happens?
Right.
January.
It probably gets rained over, or freezes to death, or starts to.
So, the Humane Officer can't come and get it?
No, no.
No, no.
Can't, really? Oh, because there's no, there's no.
Yeah, the Humane Society will deny it if Victoria picks it up and brings it to them.
And who voted this in? Who voted this is a good idea?
That's the way it's. I need to be dressed. As I recall, with discussion in the police and whatever, they were doing the dogs, but.
So when did the, when did the police department thing go away, and, and so this has been a black hole?
Um, I would say the police went away three or four years ago.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty, okay, same thing, three or four years ago, yeah.
Blaming on the COVIDs.
No, 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 don't blame it on the COVID, no, uh-uh. Nope, maybe, maybe not, not, not understanding how it all is.
Moving forward now, the dollars that are paid to license that cat, going to a bucket, then Felix the cat is outside, you call, you'll come pick up Felix the cat. How is the TPR thing, or TNR?
TNR.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
But that doesn't.
There could be.
As well. Is that an additional cost?
Yes, it would, dollars, yes, it would. So I just, I wanna make sure there's no misunderstanding here, Jim, I've been on this board three times, this is my third stint on here, I'm on here now. I've been on this board three times, this is my third stint on here, I'm on here now five or six years, five years, whatever. Uh, walking in this door tonight, absolutely no, that's where I was. Absolutely, positively, no way am I voting for this tonight, okay? And in fact, I even said to Jamie, hey, thanks a ton, you know, for, you know, getting this all over next door and stuff, you know, tonight, she's. Starts talking to me and, you know, and she's starting to tell me what's going on, Jessica comes over and starts talking to me before the meeting. And I, I've had all this experience here, eighteen, twenty years, and I had no idea. I knew we were collecting money, I just didn't know where it was going. So I, I will take all the blame for this, or anybody else, but I, I'll stand right here and tell you, I have, I had no idea. And I thought it was MPD only, and all three communities decided, we're done, we can't do this anymore, it's too much money, we. We just said two hundred bucks, I mean, a cat, come on, I mean, that's just too much money. You know, how about seventy-five bucks, how about fifty bucks, you know, but you don't realize the labor and the food and the time into it all. And, uh, but tonight, I got educated, sixty-four years old and I got educated. So I, I know, but you're, you're, you're kinda wiggling around here and I wanna make sure that I'm gonna come.
I'm not faulting anyone per se, I'm just wondering how it's felt through the cracks, like, we're still collecting the fee, where's the fee go?
I got a dog license every year our dog was alive, everyone. And I would've had no problem where that money goes, to find out that it went to Michael to buy more trucks, that's, that's upsetting, so. I'm just, I, I'm just teasing.
I mean, some of that money.
But somebody has to talk to those two Tompkins, so we gotta, we gotta circle them up and have a little discussion with those two, so, I'm sorry, what?
Are we able to ask questions or no?
Well, we wanna move forward and it is gonna be funded, so I guess, what are you asking for?
I just wanted to know if there's anybody who's funded for animals, like, is the police department getting money for the funding of animals? And not using it on animals or is someone else getting money?
Well, Jessica would know, I don't, otherwise we're gonna find out.
No, the, the police budget is really for operations of their police officers and benefits and police cars.
Okay, yeah, they used to have it in there.
There never was.
It was dogs.
For the animals specifically allocated in the budget.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and I think T and R, we have to, we have to look at an ordinance for that, so that should probably come up during staff referrals tonight to come back.
Okay.
Or, or we're probably planning my, my.
So, are we good?
There's lots of history.
Yep. I, I got educated today, so you better not bring it up.
Yep, thank you.
So nice seeing you, Tom, I see. We're, we're gonna move into closed session quick to cover something, and then we're gonna come back out in the open session, um, so Keith, uh, Pam, um. Would finance go out?
Yes.
Right?
I think.
It's, it's, it is not gonna bother me.
We only have Dave here.
It's only Dave and I'm fine with Dave, so, okay?
You can stay, they were just saying.
Okay, yep, yep.
You don't have to, yep.
You wanna go sit out there, you're welcome, but.
Yep, thank you all.
Just knowing that we're discussing it.
Okay, right, so, you, is that, is this me, yeah, this is me.
Well, yeah, now you're gonna be going into closed session, now you're.
Yep, so, uh, let's see, a motion to move into closed session, uh, pursuant to Wisconsin Stat nineteen point eight five. Current E, deliberate, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties. Investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session to which. Uh, bullet point discussion and or action on acceptance of purchase of property at fifty-five hundred Schofield Avenue, Western Wisconsin. So moved, uh, by Ermeling, second by Cronin, roll call vote. Yes, uh, board only.
Roland.
Hi.
Ermeling.
Hi.
Ringer.
Uh, he can't be on.
I just put him on the way there.
Okay, thank you.
It's all.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Island.
Yes.
Sagami.
Yes. Uh, we are in closed session, doors are shut. Uh, now, what's your pleasure? Uh, yeah, we have discussion and or action on acceptance of purchase of property at fifty-five hundred Schofield Avenue, Western Wisconsin.
Do you want me to read off what I have?
Yeah, well, do you have what Kristen has or not? You both have the same?
I was writing down everything that you were saying.
What's that?
I can take a stab at it.
Okay, it doesn't matter.
I mean, I would, I can, when I read them to you, you can agree to them that they would be on the motion and then.
I, 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 I gotta say something for Bart, cause I had a little talk with her and Keith af- just after the luncheon today. And I think it should be Bart, I'm sorry, and if that's why you're doing it, I think I like it, because she's been at that building the longest. Nineteen seventy-four, right?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, and, uh, and I think she's gonna let it go. So sync that chip, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, and if you wanna guess.
She was hired as a clerk.
Following terms.
It would be the purchase price of a hundred thousand. Uh, demolition of the buildings except for the one will be done by Gary. Um, the village will remove the asbestos and any environmental hazards, which has been done already. Guarantee of three million of assessed value. Entire purchase sets land and improvements within two years, it would be by the end of twenty twenty-four taxable in twenty twenty-five.
Would that be assessed value by the village assessor?
Yes, yes, and I, I wonder if we should take that, I wonder if we should take that two years off, because that goes past. The end of twenty-four, I think just, if we're gonna use a date, use the end of twenty-four, it has to be on the books. It has to be on the books so that.
Within twenty years.
So that we can tax in twenty-five.
End of twenty twenty-four taxable in twenty twenty-five.
Perfect.
Yes. Um, I don't know if you want this in part of the motion of, uh, anything about the future, that, that's not guaranteed, but. Do you want any part of that in the motion?
If it's not guaranteed, we can't.
There'll be no other incentives, it'll be, uh, Gary's responsibility to work with Done Right about the encroachment. There'll be a payment in lieu of taxes if that assessed value is not met by twenty twenty-five. The village will remove the castings, the manhole covers. That'll all be moved out by, prior to the sale, and the salt will be out by November first. Yep.
November fifteenth? Yes.
Fifteenth, okay.
Yeah.
November fifteenth. And, um, that, I, I don't know if you want this as part of it, but the building, she would be coming down by, it would be down by the end of the year. Do you want that as part of it?
No, I, no.
Just leave that out.
That's up to him, yep.
Start it.
He's gotta get the value.
Okay, those were the items that I had.
And then if, if Bart wants to take a break, she can, you know.
Yeah, those were the items I had.
Okay, so that's Bart's motion, second by Cronin, uh, anymore on the discussion?
You covered everything you had in there?
Does that mirror some of the stuff you had too?
Yes, it should mirror it all, but.
Okay. Okay, man, all right, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One name? Uh, Jasper, you on?
No, you can't be, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you can now, okay, all right, so we have a, uh, five and one name, five, uh, yes and one name. All right, there we are, finished. Um, you're back on, so you can move back into, uh, number seven, health insurance.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kristen.
Finance meetings, um, back in session. Item seven under health insurance.
Okay, so, item seven is basically just talking about the twenty twenty-four budget, so I got a nice, um, uh, presentation I was gonna go through. The first thing is health insurance, so, as I said before, when Cory got back to me. In August, it was two percent and now it went up to ten. Uh, we talked to her, she said, they kinda got her down to eight, but with a plan to redesign, we could get down to five, so. What I was gonna talk to the board about is seeing if the board would maybe agree to a, a dollar amount for us, cause. Right now, the plan discussions aren't gonna be until October fourth. So it's getting kinda late, and that's just when Cory's gonna let us know what security health is talking about. Um, we're not sure what that is, we're not sure what the plan designs, um, in the past, the village has had a insurance committee. And that insurance committee actually walked through and went through the plans and then what ended up happening is. They would select the pen, plans and come to the village board. Um, what we're looking at now is. Kinda like the same thing, but maybe the village board would just wanna say, okay, we don't care about the plan designs, but this is how much. We're gonna put in the budget for health insurance for employees. Um, right now, I'm gonna go through a couple slides of what the village is paying for health insurance for its employees, I have. It by, um. What, it's depending upon the plan the employee takes, how much it actually costs, and then. How much it's costing the village, and I have it divided by the, the funds. So with a two percent increase, it'll go from four hundred and forty-four thousand to five hundred and sixteen. It's an increase of seventy-two thousand dollars, um, that is divided by the funds. The reason why I let you know the funds is because. When I talk about the general fund, which is the hardest fund to balance, it's our operations, it has the most expenditures in. That's a sig- a significant number, a huge tax, not huge, it's the tax impact number, what. Impact does health insurance have on tax as well, it's, it's an increase of twenty-eight thousand dollars, so. Um, the second one is a five percent, if. The Cory would come back and here's a five percent increase in the health insurance, that'd be an eighty-seven thousand dollar increase. And then you can see how it's, um, changed between the, the different funds again. And then an eight percent, if we just go forward and say, this is the plan we're getting, the village is gonna. Um, allow an increase of eight percent with the current plans, to stay on the current plans, it'd be a hundred and two thousand dollar increase. And you can see how the, it affects each fund. So I guess right now I'm looking for feedback, and what is the board thinking with health insurance?
You said we were planning for two percent?
Originally, yes.
Now we're looking at eight?
Yes.
If there, is that kind of the, just you gotten that it's gone up to the eight, I mean, we've been pretty lucky over the years.
We've been very lucky and, over the years, when the village has been. Approached with an eight percent increase, there was a change. Um, the village always changed stuff to get it lower, but that's where, on the other hand. The, the village board wanna say, okay, we're gonna allow this. Percent increase and if staff does not wanna change health plans, they're responsible for the rest and. And that's always an option out there that the board has to determine, they're gonna pay so much. Each year as an increase, and then the rest has to be funded by employees. I guess I just want the discussion, where are you thinking on that?
I mean, we don't have to be with, uh, security, just stay under this umbrella, do we?
We're with a co-op right now, so we can't drop the co-op right now, we are in the co-op there, I think with the. The rules, we'd have to get so much notice to get out and stuff, so right now.
I wouldn't wanna get out of the co-op, I'm asking, is the co-op security help?
Yes, we're not, we're not in it, we're not with an independent agent that they can move us around to other, you know, groups.
Well, that's what I was asking, I thought so, but I was.
Yeah, it's a lot of local places.
Right, no, I wouldn't wanna get out of.
Four, five years ago.
From my, my opinion, I wouldn't wanna get out of a co-op, I, I fought to get that in.
No, it's, it's good, it's a good co-op, yeah, uh, we, it's performed extremely well. Um, okay. Um, I, I know some of you know, and I'm just gonna say this, I don't know when is the right time to say it, but, uh. Um, the fire department is gonna be unionizing. So, um, that's gonna, uh, affect us next year, uh, it'll happen within the next couple months probably. Uh, but then, all arguing, it'll be, you know, six months, eight months down the road as far as what's all gonna happen there. We're, we're talking about fifteen employees on the safer side out of sixty, sixty-five. And, uh, we'll, we'll see what it is, but I just didn't want anybody to find that out afterwards, we got a letter about two weeks ago. And we had a meeting here, uh, Tuesday, we've got, uh. Um, well, for heaven's sakes, Dean Dietrich, uh, is representing us and, uh. Yep, so management is out of it, the battalion chiefs are out of it, uh, the inspector Marty Christensen is out of it, and also Cher is outside. Okay, so just so I'm transparent there.
There's no strike plan, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah, strike, yeah.
Finding arbitration.
So, it's, it's, it's caused enough of a tough that Ryan VanderWaal from, uh. Um, Rothschild called me and wanted to ask to talk about it, so, I think Rob has not talked to anybody there yet, so, but he knows about it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think I told him, yeah. So he says, what, you know, so they, obviously it's probably gonna go to Rothschild too, so. Anyway, there you go, so here we are, back to Jessica and her insurance.
Well, so what do you ask Jessica that we say, okay, the budget for the eight percent?
It's up to you, I, you know, uh, the impacts are there, obviously, it's. General fund twenty thousand for two percent, general fund is thirty-seven thousand for five or forty-six thousand for eight.
Well, it would be kinda silly to budget for five if they're looking at possibly doing.
Is she, is she speculating eight or she's seeing?
She's speculating.
The original was ten, right?
It was two and then it went to ten and then they kinda had discussions, kinda getting them down to eight, you couldn't promise eight, but. She said they were getting them down to eight.
The county, I mean, Gil Marshall's calling me, trying to figure out if the, if the county can get into this, I don't think they can get into it that fast. But what are they, ten or twelve percent this year? Uh, so, something tells me sixteen, but I don't think it's sixteen, I think it's ten or twelve. And, and they're just, just really flying around trying to figure out if they can move fast enough.
Do they even include a group as large as the county in that co-op?
I didn't see any groups that big in there. I did not see, I, the biggest group I saw in there, I, I don't wanna name them, but, um, you know, they probably have. Five different facilities. You know, maybe a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty employees, and what does the county have, two seventy, two eighty? Something like that.
I'm not sure what they have.
I just wanna make sure I'm understanding, so if we're looking at a difference of roughly thirty thousand dollars between two percent and eight percent, correct? It's all seventy-two and then one oh two?
Yes.
Seventy-two, eighty-seven, one oh two, yeah.
So if we chose to, if we chose to fund it, uh, just hypothetically, two percent. The employees would be responsible for picking up the other thirty thousand dollars, correct? Would that, how, how does that work?
Is, you had, you had mentioned that.
The budget is funded for two percent additional and.
Oh, so. Comes in and the employees would have to pay the, am, am I correct?
So what would happen is the insurance committee would get together and they would decide on a health plan that would. It would be affordable.
Okay.
I mean, it was a different plan based on those.
Some of the co-op offers sixteen different plans, we offer our employees two. Just for ease of payroll and stuff, we don't have that many offered.
So, okay, but let's just think this through here a little bit, so if we plan for two, but it's eight. And push it all back on the thirty-two employees or, oh wait, uh, police is two, right?
The police and the safer are both on our health insurance.
So the times are bad and it's eight or ten, and now we're gonna push it this way, but when it was zero or one or two. We didn't kinda give.
I'm not, that's not.
I know, I know you're not, I know, but I, I just wanna make sure everybody understands this, that when the times were incredible, when other, other. Uh, plans are going, you know, six, seven, eight percent higher than us, I actually couldn't believe it. I mean, when we'd sit here at these budget meetings, I'm going, you've gotta be kidding me, there's just no way it's gonna hold there, and it did hold there. So, I mean, those were, should've been some, maybe some, some grace then that would go back to the employee, but not only if it goes up, then you charge. What if it stays zero, then, you know, you know what I'm saying, I mean, it's gotta kinda go back, it's gotta go each way, not just one way.
Anything I would, I would go, and I'm not even saying I'd do that, but it would have to be at least a fifty-fifty split. I mean, I would.
Well, you're saying if it's an eight percent increase, the employee would do four and we would do four, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what's the percentage now though, what's the percentage now? It's an eighty-twenty.
Why wouldn't you think of that four?
Yeah, I know, I know, so you're gonna take the increase to go to fifty-fifty, but why wouldn't the increase follow the rest and go eighty-twenty?
It could, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
It would be on that twenty percent, so you just use the example of the single employee with that sixty-five hundred.
Cause if it's eighty-twenty now, and then we take this increase and go fifty-fifty, we've just changed the formula from eighty-twenty. So maybe it's gonna be now, uh, you know, seventy-six. So maybe it's gonna be now, uh, you know, seventy-six, twenty-four. I I don't know what it would be, but you know what I'm saying, so are we eighty-twenty or are we not eighty-twenty?
And so that's where I'm coming to you and saying, maybe we don't wanna be eighty, twenty, twenty-five, seven, five. Maybe the board says, this is the monies that we're gonna give you. What I'm doing is telling you what our current plan is gonna cost. And the five percent is actually a modified, Cory threw that out, what a modified plan is that they're still working on would cost for an increase.
So how, i- if this were three years ago or four years ago, it was ten percent or eight percent. How how did we get here? So every, like, this isn't a new thing, every year we set this table and do this thing. What happens every year? So like from September twenty-eighth, twenty-three to September twenty-eighth, twenty-four. We know that number probably won't be zero, it might be five, six, seven, eight, fifty, whatever, increase. How do we change what we do? How do you budget? How do you forecast for that?
In the past, it's been a last minute decision and we've been really lucky for the last few years. We have not had a huge significant increase. We've during the beginning of the budget process, we put a two percent in there or whatever. We asked Cory how much should we put in there and it's usually her guess right away is pretty good. And this is the first time her guess was nowhere near where it ended up, so.
The reason has been that they don't need, they don't tell you the firm numbers, they don't know the firm numbers.
They don't know the firm.
In the November.
Yeah, they don't.
It's October, it's in October, we get the numbers.
Staying within security health, okay, I'm not talking about going outside of security health. Is there other plans?
Yes.
Under security that.
Coverage is just there.
Yeah, right. Deductibles.
Inside the co-op? Inside the co-op.
There's a co-op, there's sixteen plans.
Did they explain why they want to increase it eight percent?
I assume the user rate is way above what is acceptable. I think we all know, health insurance went up too.
So the co-op, so we understand this too, the co-op is eight percent, not just Weston. Not just our mod, our mod is not, has has gone so aggressive, it's the entire co-op. So all those firms we saw in there is now getting told two, but oh, maybe eight.
And I know the co-op is looking at different options, like Astia Health. These are non-big building medical centers where you can go and get um healthcare for a fraction of the cost.
And and where can our employees go?
Right now, we can go anywhere in network and I don't know what the network is like. If you're in Appleton, I think you're on network, but you can get a pass, you just have to, there's extra paperwork.
But Aspiris and Marshfield, right? And did anybody here get that notice from Aspiris? They're putting everybody on notice that they're arguing with, well, where UMR? So they're arguing with UMR and they're saying that at the end of the year, UMR not might not people go to Aspiris. And uh. Shame on them, so as far as I'm concerned, but here they are out there trying to, you know, put some fear in everybody. You know, until our employees and everybody else has a new UMR, UMR is pretty damn big, so.
So right now, like the club even offers a Marshfield only plan, which is very similar to what other plans are. And the cost is very minimal, like for the premium, but the village has chosen not to offer that one. Cause most of our employees, they're split like fifty, fifty.
And that, that's pretty normal. Well, we can kick this can down the road, you don't, you want something tonight?
I just want some guidance, cause when I come back, I want to have some pretty good numbers for you. I mean, what's an acceptable increase for the board? What what are your thoughts? You know the budget, the budget was pretty close and that had a two percent in it. So when we're talking about these additional expenditures, we gotta move stuff around to get this budget balanced.
I can't understand how this hasn't caught up to us sooner. Cause I mean, we've been not just lucky, we've been extremely lucky in this, I mean, I, every year we go through this, I just can't believe it. When I know what our company is going up or anybody else is going up, you just resting your hand or?
So the general fund difference is what, eighteen thousand dollars between an eight percent and a two percent?
General fund. To twenty-eight, so.
Yeah, it's like forty-six thousand to twenty-eight thousand.
So uh eighteen.
Eighteen thousand, the general fund that, you know, the tax rate.
You're just stating a fact?
I'm just stating a fact, just cause I know.
I thought you were gonna take it into the cap. I thought you were gonna work it into the cap somehow.
Another thing we want, we could talk about is um paying for employees to get off our plan. Or those that don't take our insurance, it's been talked around before, I kinda did the calculation. We have, we would need quite a few people to get off, I think we have five right now.
I would be all for that.
Yeah, don't we do, chief, uh, don't we, we do that at Safer, don't we?
We talked about it, but we.
We haven't done it.
Does it never approved?
I remember having a discussion about it, I can't remember.
They might not take it, but if they do take it, there's an incentive to do it. So, you know, if you look at both plans and one of the plans, uh I know there's somebody in this room that is on some under spouses. But why wouldn't that be an incentive? Why wouldn't that be? It's a no-brainer for me, I'm sorry, what?
I did a little calculation on the screen, if you look at it.
Well, hold on here, let me just get my my uh, my binoculars on, okay, go ahead. Actually, I could turn around.
Okay, so right now we have five people without insurance. I do not have it split between the funds, this is just five people, um so if we were to just offer. I'd say forty-eight hundred dollars a year, this could be adjusted. I did four hundred dollars a month, cause I was talking to somebody else and a different company offers four hundred dollars a month. For their employee not to be on, so I did four hundred a bu- month. And then um with five employees, we would be out twenty-four thousand dollars. But if we had one switch from family, so we have to pay out six people, so it's twenty-eight thousand. We would have potential cost savings of twenty grand, it, we'd still be out eight thousand eight hundred. But if we had one family, one single, we'd be off sixty-nine. But if we had two people switched from family, we'd be in the positive sixty-four hundred. So I I went down and I did some scenarios. The possibility of people switching, it's a risk, obviously. If the board would go out and do that, how many people can get off our plan? It's just something to consider, we could also do surveys to see how many employees are interested before we would actually initiate it.
That's a survey is a good idea, I wouldn't wanna campaign it. Because, you know, they 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 have to be able to do what they wanna do and and feel comfortable with that. But a a survey, if we did this, especially that number, cause the number you're talking about right now is, hmm, that's a car payment. I can get a car out of this, so we're gonna look at this a little bit more seriously, so.
Okay, and now what is it for family or what? I mean, I guess, yeah, that that's the highest rated.
The family is about twenty thousand dollars.
And we would pay if they left, we would pay them.
Forty-eight. I mean, forty-eight, I think is pretty generous, because I've I've seen a thousand and two thousand.
Okay.
You know, but but I mean, that's just, you know, that's a massive company, you know, fifty thousand employees and.
So uh single is sixty-five hundred, so I kinda, I kept it under a single rate.
Forty's a good number. I I don't know.
Just twenty percent and then whatever number, well, you have to make adjustments. At least I won't be short.
Right, I think eight is where we need to, like, for things to not be short, I think the formula's gotta stay eighty-twenty. I don't, I don't think a raise should shake up the formula. But it shouldn't always be thrown, you know, in the employee side, it's gotta be both sides. And uh so the eighty-twenty, I think, should be the rule, then I I would be for an incentive, definitely.
Okay.
And is there any chance that you can do with your insurance company? Your insurance committee, not company, I'm sorry. And talk about some of these other options of in plans, because their twenty percent isn't gonna go up as much naturally as our eight. But it is going to go up and they may wanna look at some of those.
Well, so our meeting with Cory is October fourth, so after that, we'll get the committee together and see what kind of decisions. Um, we can make there.
We give those figures too and letting them put in some.
Right.
I don't wanna force another program on on the employees if, you know, you're gonna just create more issues than what you solve.
Are are we health, or dental and I care, right? Right, so the I care, the the, when you go in to have your um exam, that's covered under health, right?
No, not anymore. Security health used to cover and this year in twenty-twenty-three, they discontinued that coverage.
Completely? Okay, cause ours is covered under health, but then we have the rest of it, uh, the glasses, uh the um, or I should say the frames, contacts, glasses. It's it's two hundred dollars per person, per family member, e- every two years, so you don't get to collect a bunch of frames. But um, and then we pay that out of pocket ourselves, so, I I mean, the company does. So we we can reimburse two hundred bucks every two years.
Oh, wow.
If you wanna do that, I just.
The village office offers eye insurance, vision insurance through Delta Dental. It's actually a minimal cost and it's it's decent coverage if you're in network.
I said it's supplemental.
Yeah. But dental with is covered.
We'd be on it.
Okay, alright, alright.
And take a employee survey and.
Yeah, is that what we're gonna do?
We'll do the employee survey for the.
Let's just see if there's a winner.
Okay, sounds good.
And then we have to do, we also have to do uh Safer and we also, how does that work? I know, but Ramon's gotta do something with Safer too.
Stars what?
I mean, if we're gonna do health insurance, we don't do all the. Yeah, okay, and then please to.
So they have representation on our insurance committee, we invited them to our meeting. And they, we invite them when we would be reviewing any potential plan changes.
Alright. Health insurance is done, you satisfied?
Okay. And then moving on, special revenue funds, so I'm looking, I'm hoping you guys are gonna be paying attention. And I don't go through these again, usually I go through these right before adoption, but I thought.
Did we get scolded?
Oh, no, no.
Jamie wondered, I I just, she whispered it twice.
No, so I just, I wanna review these, so when I come before you on the Monday before Thanksgiving, that it's not a shock. If you have questions or if we need to change stuff, I'm not gonna be bringing these back.
I I just gotta stop this just for a second, I I don't know if you're noticing, Keith has got it here, he's starting to miss this right now. And I I mean, I I'm, I know it's a little melancholy, I'm sorry, but you know, it's your last meeting and he's, I think he's feeling really sad right now, but this, he doesn't get to have this again, so. Are you okay?
I know, my dad has probably watched the football game.
You wanna tissue or, I mean, you're you're good? I'll shut up, okay. Four eighty-inch TVs, there's no game. Keith is begging Nate to slip that one over right there.
And now I know why we're getting scolded.
Yeah, I know, it's cause of me. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, refuse recycling, there is no changes, we talked about increasing the fee before and there's nothing changed.
Why aren't we changing?
We looked at the contract and that, right now that diesel is low. That extra twelve hundred dollars a month, we're not gonna be paying.
I I know, but I mean, why, I mean, I thought we were gonna do like a couple of dollars per container, I mean, no, do we feel like we don't need to?
I don't feel we need to, cause right now it's a.
I mean, what, how many containers are out there?
Yeah, but that's has to stay in the recycling fund.
Oh, okay, okay.
So currently with the proposed buzzer budget, there is an increase, funding increases sixty-six thousand dollars, so. I didn't feel we needed to, yep.
What are those miscellaneous uh income or revenue?
Um, sales materials or something like that.
Oh, when we sell like our compost or all, some of that uh at Ryan Street. But we do that every now and then, when we have a big pile, like Sue's bought a bunch of our um leaves this past spring, I think it was past spring. We we don't worry about then rolling them, they just, you know, after spring pickup, we have big piles of compost and we put it out there and, you know. Whoever gives us the best number, they can, they haul it away, so.
How many dollars are we talking about? A one-time deal, one time?
Like ballpark. Hundred dollars.
Okay.
Are we, when is that contract up?
With?
Refuge recycling.
Seven years, so it's twenty-six, no, twenty-five, twenty-six. Three more years.
We talked about this, but my, I know we're we're getting a a deal that's really good right now, so my 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 question is. Instead of, instead of shocking everybody when that deal isn't there anymore, do we increase it a little bit? The next few years so that.
A dollar per box.
He can increase his cost on West Marathon County, increase their.
They're they're locked into this contract really tough, cause um, who who was the other group out there, Harder? Yeah, Harder says, I can't touch that price right now, until they're out of contract, then I'll be able to blow them away.
Steve was saying was. Just like the insurance thing we just talked about, yeah, if there's no increase on this for the next three years until the contract is done, then what? And so if you can take a dollar per container per year or something and put a few dollars in this fund. It's like, oh, Michael, we we don't wanna have a Wassa water rate increase.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Yeah, but the Wassa water rate, I mean, they they're transparent, they can say, well, we did this. So we're gonna do a dollar or two, which I think we kinda should too, but we we, how how do we say that? Oh, because of three years, we're gonna go up. So we're gonna charge you more now.
It's a special charge.
Yeah, yeah. But then, but if that, if this charge today holds us farther down in three or four years, then fine, then I'm fine. What's that?
When it gets full, then we're gonna pro. Right now, they take a base from six hundred pounds to keep that price down. I don't think they should come in here, we're not the captain of the base, so.
I agree.
With the proposed budget, it is a sixty-six thousand dollar, we're collecting more, sixty-six thousand dollars more than we're expending. So I don't really, we can look at it next year, but I think I couldn't justify it to the taxpayers. They were collecting more, just in case we need.
You think of our water, you think of our sewer, and you think of, okay, all the crap is gone daily and I get fresh water every day and I think of the number. And I'm thinking a hundred and forty bucks for three months, I mean, that is a deal of a lifetime, I can't get that at the campsite, you know? And um, but then you go to Merrill and you're paying three fifty for three months, you know?
Don't go to Merrill.
Yours is a lot higher, right? Yeah, but I I, when you think about that, per day, it's really not that expensive. Alright, enough, okay, this is six over, we're good, alright?
Okay. This is the grant.
Are we done with the food scraps? Is that not gonna come back up again? Did we say yesterday? No.
But the debt service payment increase for our MMSD, I know that's not on our tax roll.
That's in sewer, we can't, we'll get there, we'll get there. I could uh quickly go through the grants fund, so we have to, by the end of next year, have our full amount of our upper funds committed. So that'll be a of job next year for the board is to basically decide finally to get rid of those funds. Or at least commit them, so I usually don't put a budget in there, cause we're not quite sure where the money's gonna be spent. I know it's in parks right now, but we don't have a good dollar amount, so I didn't put anything in there. But. Okay, TIF one. TIF one, you can see the big transfer out, that is for Weston Avenue, you know, I think Stone Ridge next year. Um, we have a couple road projects that we will be doing within the TIF boundaries. The increment, we're estimating six point six million dollars. I'm almost positive it will be more than that, but we're a little conservative, cause with the new shared revenues. And the funding for the school district, if these guys drop their tax rate, our TIF increment drops. So um we wanna be a little bit aware of that situation, but TIF is doing super good. This is the CDA TIF, we pay the debt, the balance of debt at the end of this year is twelve point three million dollars, yeah. This is the CDA TIF, we pay the debt, the balance of debt at the end of this year is twelve point three million dollars yet. This is TIF two, um we're estimating collecting six hundred ninety five thousand dollars of increment. And the only expenditures that are recorded in this fund right now are the debt payments of a hundred and fifty nine thousand. Um, this fund is waiting for opportunity to help with economic development on Schofield Avenue. Um, we are estimating of having one point four million dollars in this fund. So this is the fund that we cannot be collecting like this. We need the projects to come and we need to spend, cuz I think our taxpayers would be a little frustrated to see that much money in there.
Aren't we planning on redoing Schofield Ave?
We are.
Does that money come out of that number?
It is, but right now, we're kinda waiting on some economic development and then. The Schofield Avenue has to be in the works for twenty twenty six, it's the last year of expenditures for the fund, so.
Means it has to be designed next year or?
Yeah, so this, oh my God, I nearly have the RFP out for design. Either tomorrow or Monday, that'll be going out to the engineering consultants for uh design proposals.
From where to where?
Uh Birch to Normandy. It's outside to to boundary, and the TIF two project plan, it was defined, I believe, as Normandy to Birch Street, so.
And Normandy is Tommy's.
Walgreens, yeah, Tommy's, yep. So as long as, as long as we have that project in the works, we can justify.
I don't remember what we actually have to do if like, if we don't complete it in twenty twenty six, I'm not sure if there's certain things that we can do to make sure. Maybe just the contract.
Yeah, I I remember Greg talking about having the funds committed, um so.
I don't know officially how we do that, if it's just board action or. But anyway, if there's projects that come along, we have money to help in TIF two.
Okay, I have a question now, cuz I can remember the school district. Actually asking us if when we got to the point where we're gonna start um closing the. The TIF districts and at one, yeah, we would. If we could take a few off ahead of time. Certain areas or whatever, and at one, at one point in time, I know. Some of our administrators were talking about doing that, I can remember the finance committee going. Hold it cuz we hadn't been into it, and that's when all of a sudden the state came and almost wiped out our values in TIF and. It was a good thing we hadn't started doing that.
Right.
But is there any thing that we can do, I know we're doing Weston Avenue and all the other expenses, is there? I'm just thinking of the school district because they said they get whammied all in one year and then the next year it's not, you know. Increases aren't there, um if there is a way of doing that without jeopardizing our, you know. Revenues on that.
We'd have to see, right now, we were talking to Greg Johnson from Allers today and there's a TIF affordable housing. Is it called the law that we could use and if that would allow us to take one year's worth of increment, so six point six million dollars. And we could use that to incentivize affordable housing.
Find a score.
You're the only person in here who cares about that game.
I I I actually don't, I actually don't, I don't care, what, seven to three, Lions.
Okay, cuz now, I guess my thought is, I don't want to take anything. Of the value out of the TIF. If we are gonna find ourselves in a bind because we don't have enough revenue.
Well, right now.
Enough to the end, I'm just wondering if say, you said we need to close it, what what year was it, twenty?
The expenditures is twenty twenty six, we don't close it till twenty thirty one.
Oh, okay, that's a, okay.
We could close it early, so before twenty thirty one, we could close it, which would be.
TIF one, okay, but. I guess what I'm getting at is the school district was asking this year's COVID, when they came to some of our meetings. Um, was that rather than say, close it this year, the whole thing. That we would close it in increments.
We're gonna use amendments to to basically take things out.
Okay, that was.
Yeah, that was the discussion, was using the amendment process to take out.
Yeah, because they were saying they didn't want it all at one one in one year.
You're you're suggesting though that we would, we would use TIF funds to. To supplement affordable housing.
There is a law that allows us to keep the TIF open one more year or to close it. But collect increment for one more year and that full amount of increment could be used to supplement. Uh, an affordable housing project.
You could also use it for like um creating a program for for current residents to upgrade their homes, things like that. It's a newer law, so we don't know a lot about it yet. But there is a possibility, it's it's based off of, what did you say, the median, it's like a percentage of the the median value of the community.
I wouldn't wanna put off closing it, I'm just saying.
I don't think you, I think you still can close it, it just allows you to take this money and put it in a pool to be able to use for housing. Cuz you're gonna see the state really push for trying to get housing affordable.
Well, yeah, we're also seeing our developers push for help, right? So money could be used for infrastructure.
Setting construction, as long as there, as long as there rents and things or they make it so that it's not outside of that. Affordable rate of our community and because our community tends to be richer, we're gonna have higher rates than like the city of Los Angeles would have. Cuz our median income is higher here.
But for how long do we have to guarantee the?
It's just one, so it's basically a one year program, you said, so you could use it and it could just sit there too.
Like the money would be there for.
It's just the, yeah, the money gets, is like in a pool and you can use it.
Right, but I'm just saying, when we run out of money, then they still want us to subsidize rent, where do we?
It's not necessarily subsidizing rent. It would be for like, back when we talked about doing like a, helping people. Having some kind of a grant program where they would fix up their houses.
Okay, but I thought you were talking affordable housing.
But it wouldn't necessarily necessarily go to rents, it would be for a developer to encourage them to build affordable housing instead of having them. Build the higher valued.
Or or it would help them lower their initial construction costs, so they're, so they're having to charge as much.
Cuz I'm going, well, if you got X number of dollars and you've got affordable housing and you're trying to keep that rent at an affordable.
It might help to get people into a house, cuz that's the struggle that you're gonna see now.
Get them to allow them to build affordable, cuz that's where the old nursing home there, they were, that's what that was supposed to be, and then they found out that. The cost of remodeling it and fixing it exceeded what they thought it was going to.
It was supposed to be in low, oh, under four, under five, and what is it, seven or eight hundred?
Michael, you and I were talking about the TIF and we were running out of time. You have, you made a comment, you said we can extend it.
So so that's, that's where the, you know, as we talk about. That's the horrible housing part, your your question was both, if we have a project that we know we wanna do. And say something happens where we can't get done in twenty twenty six, that's where Greg had mentioned if we escrow or have. Have certain amount of that funding, you know, say, a million dollars is for this project. I believe we can set that aside as long as it's declared for earmarked for that one project. Yeah, so we'll have to look into what those exact details are, but. You know, but you have to be, I think, very specific as far as this money is reserved for that project.
That's pretty expenditure curve, but that's, you're talking about closure, I know we talked about incremental closure. More recently, and I think because the time is getting so short, it's kinda looked at as being impractical, cuz you have to do amendments every time.
So that was just one of the things I can remember that came to our meetings with.
We ran out, we closed TIF, we don't do any project. Because we can't afford. If that was an emergency or something come up, but other than that, I don't think we can afford to quit. Any project for that.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Also, there are people right now, they work on TIF and some of the child time being charged to the TIF district. They have to manage also death costs.
And closing one is the value, closing two is, there's no value. There's nothing there, you might as well leave two all the way. Just let it go, let it go.
Well, I'm just, we need to use. Getting short. School district was pretty.
But that was a while, right? You know, so, I mean, the county now got this committee out there, whoop de doo, I mean, they're gonna have a lot of fun with that, so. So anyway. They're not talking about our TIF, I mean, we have successful, that's why it's worth almost thirty percent, so.
The aquatic center, the aquatic center, we are budgeting for a loss this year. We're very conservative with our revenues, it it's just the way we usually budget, um last year's actual was for a hundred and forty five thousand. We're proposing a hundred and forty seven, so it's really not that conservative, it's close to the twenty two actual. Um, this year's actual is a little bit better at a hundred and sixty thousand or approximately.
Of what, of what, loss?
Of, no, pool revenues.
Okay, revenues?
Yeah.
So what's the loss?
Um, we're budgeting a seventeen thousand dollar loss.
And that's with the forty switched over from tourism?
Yeah, forty from tourism and forty taxes, so as a reminder, we do levy forty thousand dollars of our taxes to, that's go to the aquatic center.
So it's truly, is it truly ninety seven?
Yes.
Okay, ninety seven, and um Rothschild is about fifty thousand, they're losing a nurse.
So, moving forward, looking into twenty twenty five, if we continue, I mean, this year we're estimating increasing our fund bill, so. It's all depends obviously on the expenditures during the year and the weather, so the Ys are, the Y. Members, the Y partnership is going up there, we got a number of what they're planning on increasing the wages, so we increased. That based on their estimated wage increase, so. Any other questions on the aquatics or?
I'm a huge proponent on the Y with ours, I I just think that brings us up several levels, so.
Okay, room tax, room tax, um I put that on, we had some discussions, obviously, we have a contract. That is gonna be separate discussion from this, but just um currently, we're estimating taking in about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And then from that, eh, within the the village, we use about a hundred and fifty five of that. And that is split between now the proposed cats, they um the pool, forty thousand, and then equipment.
That's our thirty, that's our thirty that we can do anything we want.
That's the thirty, we can do anything, if you wanna put that a hundred and fifty five thousand dollars and plug a hole in the general fund, you can do that. That's the board has to.
The the twenty five is, has to be used for tourism or, you know. See what else we can do with that, but I I believe the next contract we sign, I I think that twenty five should go to thirty. Um, I don't think we should be the highest municipal municipality in the area. Um, Wassa is at thirty nine point one or thirty nine point two, and then attached it at thirty nine, which we are forty five. Um, they have six and a half percent that if if the sports center fails. Out in Rothschild, then that six and a half comes off and that six and a half goes to their thirty, or you know, so. It goes to their side, not to the CDB, so the CDB would then be knocked down uh from thirty nine one down, six and a half down to like thirty four. And I I think there's some some components in in that Wassa one that we should look at. And put in the nurse too, um and I I don't know if I told you this the last time when I met with Tim White, I think the whole meet. And I'm on TV right now, but the whole meet was about hiring two more employees, I don't know if I told you all that. I did, oh, good, alright, thank you, cuz I thought, God, did I forget that, one was social media and one was marketing and I I just don't know, so. And that forty five percent that I I believe in the past used to be used for some events. I don't believe that forty five of theirs is used for events anymore. I I it certainly isn't being used for us, because um they're encouraging our twenty five all the time, uh especially out of the area. And um so, and they're not any closer with Rothschild, in fact, they've gone backwards with Rothschild, they pulled all. Uh, the hotels out of all of their brochures, everything. And um, you know, the biggest win for us is to get Rothschild signed in the CDB, that's probably the biggest thing for us for our area. And um, and I and I I just don't know how to help them get to the table, so we'll see what happens.
We also need the employee to run the Badger Stadium.
Yep, yep.
Because Badger Stadium, it been neglected, I think they should bring it back up where it was. Because it had a lot of impact on the economy of the area.
Sounds like you're trying to sell that off, so they were, are are we being taped right now? Yeah. Alright, shoot.
Yeah, they had offered to sell it, but they'll be supported on the board.
Um, well, I kinda got a text this afternoon and it's, and there's a whole bunch of S's and H's in there for. To keep confidential, but this new campaign that they're coming out with has Weston designated, I think I was telling Jen, as the sports base camp. And um. Possibly the Badger State Games might become in the west. So, we'll see. But but I'm hearing, yep, there's a lot of stuff happening here and um. The thing is though, they're they're more, they don't do events, I mean, they've kind of pushed the events off to everybody else, you even called me, I think I was telling you about that. So we'll we'll see how this all shakes out, so, and then somebody buy Shakeys, do they sell Shakeys? To um.
Same order as the garage.
Yes, and that, so that is um the guy that had the building next to Inner City and Grand that burned down. Him, okay. Okay, alright, here we go, where are we? Oh, so room tax, that that's, I just wanted to talk about that five percent, it's not gonna be able to help us, because the only help we can get is at thirty. And the rest is tourism, but I um I think it would behoove us not to push a little bit more for our area. If if we have somebody um, and if the CDB isn't gonna do it just for us, then maybe we do some more, um. I know there's a little dissension on the board, isn't uh Tim with Jagorzi, uh isn't the the general manager of the Hilton and and Ramon? Who is that, uh Tim? Who?
Gary Fish.
Nope, no, he is a new board member on the CDB and is uh who's the general manager of the Hilton Garden Inn in Ramon? That gentleman, so um he's having some issues, cuz he wants, he wants this area promoted more and more differently. And uh that's a beautiful hotel, Holy Mackerel, nice restaurant in there, Van Acres or something like that's called, I think.
He get a lot of people coming for Ramon.
Who?
Tim Vandyat.
Tim Vandyat, that's it, that's who it is, thank you. Yeah, and apparently there's another hotel going in Ramon too, another Jagorzi.
Vandyak for marketing.
What?
Back when Dean, there was a.
You're right, okay, so anyway, that's enough of that, I guess.
Okay.
Okay, civic social, these are, that's the one with our scholarship money, which we haven't done much with. Because interest rates have been so low, and then the farmer's market, we still have the farmer's market manager in there and. All the expenditures, um then the other one is the park trust, the only thing is our dog bags. We don't get donations to cover them, so eventually we'll have to figure out. What revenue source we want to use to cover our dog bags, that's about three hundred.
Dog bags?
Poop bags, yeah, I know.
That's another thing, when when this gal talked tonight to some officer one, the uniformed one, um Ashley, thank you, um. I I'm gonna tell you, you could put all of the stuff out there you want about the homeless humans and you ain't gonna get much, um but I'll tell you, you do pets. And if we have some promotions on that, I mean, all day long, you'll get stuff on cats and dogs, I'm serious, you will. And I mean, we we wanna get some people to try to help donating for our poop bags, whatever, I mean. I'm serious, you will, and I mean, we, we wanna get some people to try, help donating for our poop bags, whatever, I mean, it's gonna happen. And by the way, Rothschild just opened theirs, in Gaskapark, they're, um, it's very fenced in, it's very fencing all over the place. But, uh, I saw some pictures of it.
Maybe that's another thing to look at our ARPA funds, how can we improve our dog park and really get people to participate and. Want to help improve it.
Yep.
More, more ideas than people to do, but we're all there.
How are we paying our market manager?
Our market manager is being paid with licenses, the fees that people pay.
Right, I know, but didn't we have a discussion that she was being paid with like gift cards?
No, no, we're paying her straight.
I'm just making sure.
We're above board, yeah, we're paying her above board.
In twenty twenty-four, she's budgeted to be paid that way, and twenty twenty-three, we still got the gift cards in there.
Yeah, yeah, and then, uh, everybody saw the picture of the alt today, on Camp Phillips.
Is that real?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I, I got it from the person who actually took the picture.
Sure, and Camp Phillips. I mean, I don't know how that thing runs through the woods, Holy Mackerel. I'm not kidding.
Yeah, it's like a fake picture, I think. It does look.
Drive or something?
Yes, I did.
Okay, debt service fund, the, um, this is the fund that. All the approvals finally end up here, um, we have, our oldest debt is from twenty seventeen, it's our. Two thousand four, actually, is our TIF two CDA bonds, or TIF one CDA bonds, or twenty seventeen A. And the rest are, are GO, which is backed by full faith of our property tax levies. Our debt service is planning and going up around three hundred thousand dollars for between twenty twenty. Three and twenty twenty-four. I included the twenty nineteen, 'cause a lot of people, they're like, oh, you got this new building, that's just gonna be skyrocketed. On twenty nineteen, we had larger debt payments than we do now with our new building coming on. That's what a lot of people didn't understand is the structure of our debt dropped significantly. And the new municipal center kind of just filled it in to bring us back to where we were.
I know we're gonna try and keep it at the same level.
Well, originally, we budgeted, is it one point eight million dollars in our debt service? And then we actually had to drop it to one point five. We didn't wanna drop it, but we ended up dropping it one point five, and then we ended up levying more in the general fund. But, so far, I think, I talked to a couple people regarding the taxes. Go their taxes, and they were very shocked when I said, well, the tax rate's only looking at going up. Forty cents. They were, because, because of the building, they thought it would be, end up going a lot more. But yes, let's go back. So the utility funds, we'll talk about the water utility, we have an eight percent increase, we're still looking at a loss. It's something that we need to really look to see, we, we budget a loss very often. And then we come in positive, because the projects that we plan to do don't always get done. But, um, right now, we're budgeting a loss of two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, we'll see. Where it ends up, we do have large projects coming forward with the utility for our water treatments. And we got a new well going on, so. We'll keep you up to date on that and see if we need another rate increase next year.
You're really showing the losses in the operating fund, right? You're not talking about, but the debt services associated with utility area?
Well, interest is included in operations, it's included in the revenues and expenditures. Like when we pay for the well, you're not gonna see that on this page, but the interest on the debt we pay. Is appearing on this page, it's included in operations.
End up with an increase in our pilot payment too.
The pilot payment is the revenue that the general fund gets from the water utility. So it's the new infrastructure, the pilot payment is going up, so the general fund will see more revenues. Um, here's the sewer utility, I don't know, Michael, you wanna talk about what we, the news we got from Re Mountain Sanitary District?
They've got a massive, uh, I guess a big plant upgrade of roughly twenty million dollars, so over the. They're taking out a twenty-year, um, borrowing for that, so they need to increase their revenue by roughly a million dollars every. Year for the next twenty years, uh, or about sixty percent of the wastewater flow to Re Mountain Metro, so. We are. Us, Rothschild, Corona Water. Schofield's wastewater goes to Wasso.
Okay.
Mozeney.
Mozeney's in there too?
And, uh, Ramon.
And we're sixty percent, how in hell are we sixty percent?
Give that much more.
We can't, have we checked the gauges?
Well, so we also.
I'm, I'm just kidding, but I mean, seriously, so Mozeney is ten thousand, right, or eight thousand? I thought they were the same as Merrill. Okay, Rothschild seven, right?
I think they're about fifty-five hundred, six thousand. And we also serve probably about a third of the Village of Rothschild with wastewater.
Alright, that's it, okay.
So, water sewer.
Okay, alright.
Re Mountain Metropolitan Sewer District, not Re Mountain Sanitary District.
We have a lot, we have a lot more commercial development too, in general.
Yeah, probably a little more multifamily.
Yeah. Yeah, the water from Kerry goes there too.
Uh, Kerry has its own wastewater plant, actually, so we have Kerry, um, but they're portable water. But they're, they treat their own wastewater, or their manufacturing process. So, yeah, I guess the, our, uh, so our debt service payment to, um, Re Mountain Metropolitan Sewerage District. Is roughly going up six hundred thousand dollars, um, earlier. I know, um, Jessica's looking at, I believe, some of our debt payments, um, where. Who are debt is falling off. Um, so, our cash flow, maybe isn't a hundred percent there, but it's not, uh, a six hundred thousand dollar deficit. But I guess similar to Keith's comment on the other one, uh, the debt that Re Mountain Metro is taking on, that we have to pay is part of our operating fund, it's not our debt. So it shows up as an operating expense versus, uh.
The principal payment.
Yeah.
In the past, we had a sewer revenue bond that we had five hundreds, hundred thousand dollars of principal payment. Every year, that revenue bond is now paid off, so we don't have that. So, cash flow wise, that six hundred thousand dollars is not gonna kill us, we're gonna have the same. Fun level that we had previously, but right now, you're gonna see it on the operating. Cause principal payments don't show up on operations, they only show up on the balance sheet, which you guys don't ever see. So, but we do, eventually, we're gonna need to raise our rates, um, I don't. If we ever were to go out with our sewer revenue bonds, that, the coverage ratio wouldn't be there, so. It's something we'll need to probably look at by second quarter, to see what kind of rate increase we're gonna have for our sort of. Stormwater, we did have a rate increase was just approved, we're budgeting a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar surplus this year, or next year. General fund, we talked about the taxes already, we're looking at a estimated tax rate of seven dollars and eighty-one cents. That's supposed to be twenty twenty-three. No, actually, the estimated tax rate is eight dollars and twenty-one cents, last year's rate was seven dollars and eighty-one cents, so. Uh, where are we going, there still needs to be a comprehensive look at the village as a whole, we did do a strategic plan. We're gonna continue to implement them, but with our needs coming forward, it's still having to decide what are our priorities. And what needs to get done first. We did the strategic plan, now financially, how can we fund that strategic plan with limited funds? We still talk about referendums, that's one of the things that, we talked about public safety at last meeting, we had some discussion on public safety. How can we increase our funds for public safety, I had discussions with some people and. We have to remember where we are in joint ventures with other municipalities. And what we don't always remember is, these other municipalities are not willing to pay. Re Mountain is putting on the brakes for safer, we, village board, I believe, is willing to help fund. And make sure that the service levels are there for safer, but when our partner is not on the same page as us. It's really hard to. Hard to move ahead unless we are gonna be funding for a service letter level for not just Weston residents. But Re Mountain residents, um, same as Everest Metro, we have the city of Schofield. We haven't had our first meeting yet, but for the last five years, City of Schofield has definitely given the chief a hard time and.
We bent over backwards the last couple of years, we, we gave, we gave more. And, uh, you know, especially if you look at, um, our ARPA funds, you know, we did two hundred and twenty thousand to both agencies. And I believe, uh, you know, uh, I mean, the town of Weston's a, a huge, you know, uh, support, but they're frozen at one, one fifteen. And I think their, um, ten percent was sixty-seven hundred dollars. And I think, um, we were two hundred and twenty thousand to the E and P D, and I believe twenty-six thousand was from Schofield. And it's, you know, how do you claw that back, you can't get our two twenty to go just to the Weston side of the police. It's to the whole group, but in the spirit of ten percent, that's just what it was, but, um, this year's gonna be a really, really bad year.
Last year.
Mayor Horn's gonna put up a big stink, and, um, you know, the contract reads, it's a two-year, it's a two-year out. And he's, he's telling me, uh, very, um. Uh, roughly that everyone wants him in their group, and that's just not true, so, nobody's reaching out to them, so. It, it, we'll see how this goes, but we're gonna, this is gonna be a tough year, you're gonna be. Pretty happy where we stand after this one, 'cause I know you haven't been the last, so, I won't bend over.
Well, last year, the, of the two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of funds that Vilt gave Everest Metro, they used forty of that. To make sure Schofield's increase was status quo. I mean, that, that's, that is supposed to be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that's Everest Metro could use for new equipment and stuff that they needed. And they had to use it. Plug operations, yeah.
Two years ago.
So, on that note, how are we, how are we planning for? These changes that are gonna be occurring at Safer at the union?
Right now, the budget was adopted, do you have any plans to reopen that?
Well, that'll be up to the board, I was gonna talk to you and Roger, who was the finance director in, in Re Mountain, uh, we have a meeting next Thursday.
Yep.
So I was gonna talk to you two about that at that point, um, there is obviously a lot of unknowns right now, um. So, it's gonna be a, a difficult year, I know Mark and I have had some discussions, and I talked with Fred from Re Mountain yesterday. Actually, Keith Wang and I called me this morning, um. So, yeah, it's gonna be a difficult six to eighteen months, I would say, um, we have. A lot of challenges, there's probably gonna be some significant, uh, wage increases that'll come from that, and there will be some additional, uh, health insurance costs. And on top of that, we're still short staffed, so it's gonna be, uh. Interesting, to say the least. I, I don't have a solid plan right now, 'cause I'm not sure, I mean, obviously, it all boils down to finances, I don't know where those are coming from. And without, you know, we did mention referendum, I think you had brought it up potentially at our, I don't, I don't think it was our last meeting, I think it may have been the meeting before. And, and like Jessica said earlier, the village of Re Mountain, they're not willing to do that.
They don't need a referendum.
A big part of that was, is, you know, they obviously just incorporated, and during that incorporation process, they did ensure their, their citizens that there would not be. Increases in taxes, and I think they have a pretty hard time, the timing is just bad.
They have room in the budget to increase their taxes. They just promised it, so they don't wanna go back on that, which is understandable.
I guess I just wanna make sure that we've got some money set aside. In, in the event that we have to, I don't know if you have some rough ideas on numbers for next year, you probably, I know you said. On Tuesday night that you had some numbers written down, I don't know if you. So just status quo, and that, but that's, so what's the split, is it six, sixty?
Sixty-six, thirty-three, roughly.
Okay. So I guess, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, at some point, we have to somewhat plan for that, so we don't.
And keep in mind also that with the new, and I have no idea how that would work with the E and P D, but with the new shared revenue rules, that. You cannot go backwards in public safety staffing.
Right.
There's four things you need to main, and you need to maintain two of the four, both these fire.
You're talking about the. I don't know if the village qualifies for that one.
I don't think we had a big enough population.
Uh, twenty-four to three, you might wanna take your shirt off, Mike.
I'm a Cubs fan too, so, I'm used to losing, you still just gotta stick strong, you know, every now and then we surprise you.
The Detroit Lions, Lions are kicking our bodies. In Lambo.
Any questions, I guess, we're on the last screen. I try, I, I don't get a lot. I'm working on getting feedback, that'll be my goal next year, to get everyone to comment on something.
I mean, I've made a few comments.
So the next item, I guess, number eight.
So, are we gonna do that tonight? Okay, so.
They reconciled the, the question that they had, yeah, but it had to do with the municipal judge.
Okay.
Um, the clerks are responsible for making sure that all the candidates are on the candidate. Are on the ballot for the local, their local races. And there was some conversation about the municipal judge being the Tony's responsibility. To be on the ballot, and that has been resolved in that, um. Agreement I sent yesterday.
Okay.
And in that paragraph three, it says, except as required by law for multi-jurisdictional municipal judges. Municipal clerk bears responsibility, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Or is this, is this finance?
I, I was just wondering, I wish, when you do your agendas, when we got these joint, where it gets to be, who's?
Oh, you want them separately?
No, yeah, we would.
You want separately? Alright, so you, you go first with finance.
Okay, what's your pleasure on the Wisconsin vote election?
Vote to approve.
Okay. On the question, all of you can signify by saying hi. Opposed, so carried.
Now, for the board, um, same, uh, motion, also approved by Barb, second by, um, Steve. Uh, any more on the question, hearing none, all of us can say aye. Opposed, so carried.
Okay, change order for Weston Avenue for County Road G work.
I almost flipped off when I saw that, I think, I was like, what the hell, but then I realized it's.
But then I realized it's actually additional work. We actually approved already. And it's instead of doing it twice or tearing up twice. We would do it in one sequence.
Yeah, the majority of it's a pass-through cost of the county. You've got a little bit of Weston Ave on the east side that. Will pick up the cost on, but the majority of that is the main line of County Road J, which is.
So wouldn't, would have that been done next year?
Yeah, correct. It would have been done in, uh, twenty twenty-four. So we're doing a, a big chunk of it solid next year.
Correct, yeah. Central that Tuesday. Well, you couldn't, you couldn't get through the other day. I mean, the other day I was, I, I went all the way to the end and I, they were, the whole road was blocked off. I don't know what they did to the meat place. Oh my god.
Now, we're trying to get the water main in right now.
We have agreement with Mayor Tack County or?
Yes.
Checking, I didn't see it.
Well, I, I guess, yeah, I have an email from, uh, the county saying they will pay that cost, so. Uh, if you want something more formal, we can get that before the work commences.
Well, I think it should be approved by committee and board. That's a big tag, you know, two hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have the money. They're going to be spending it.
I know.
Is this a time of the essence at all?
Um, probably gonna start it next week.
That's okay. I think it's still should do it.
Is that okay?
But you see, you have an agreement that's signed, either if it's just by you and Mark or whatever.
Sure. Of the two hundred and forty thousand dollars, what, what, what part of that is gonna be our cost?
I think we, I believe we have about thirty, thirty-five thousand, something like that.
Is that coming out of tid one?
Correct, yeah.
So that you're gonna put that back on public works?
Uh, well, you need a motion tonight.
I can, unless you just wanna tell me to make an agreement and, uh. I can have the county sign it.
Okay.
Now, just agreeing that. I'll, I'll take the written email and make sure they sign.
I'll make a motion to approve along with, um, some additional documentation from the county. Um, stating that they will pay their share of the cost.
So motion by a corner of the second right, pencil on the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Now finance.
Recommend.
Yeah, I, I don't know, finance needs to worry about that one.
Okay.
On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Your ten is yours.
Discussion of twenty twenty-four budget and timeline.
Our meeting with Corey is on October fourth. Um, I'm hoping, we don't have any words. So Clay said he's not gonna have a joint meeting until after that, till he gets some more numbers. So I'm not sure when do we wanna meet next.
So when, when you kinda estimate for her? You don't, you can't?
I don't know. I can bring her back. I mean, the unknown numbers for our village budget are safer if we're gonna be changing that for anything. And it's for Everest Metro. Um, and both. The insurance is definitely a huge significant, um, number for all entities.
So you, you wanna, just before, the week before Thanksgiving or the week of Thanksgiving is when you. You, um, publish? So we wanna probably.
So we, we have our regular meeting, which is the third Monday. It's the sixteenth. So do we wanna meet before then? If we don't meet before, then we can meet, I think it's the last day in October. Not, not Halloween, but a different. Let's see. Beat on the thirtieth.
Need us to meet before the sixteenth?
That's where, do we want to meet for the sixteenth? Cause if we don't meet before the sixteenth, I have to publish. Um, I think I have to publish by the end of, like, by the third. So I'd need to have a good budget on the first of November to get it published in the paper for Sunday, the fifth.
Well, do we wanna, so sixteenth we're gonna meet. Do we wanna just tentatively have the twenty-third, twenty-fourth? So they give you a full week?
I'm not gonna be in town.
Oh, okay.
Song can.
What about the week of the tenth? Could we do something that week?
Yes.
Lead up to the sixteenth.
I thought you had the tenth originally.
Well. We have a safer meeting the tenth.
Yeah, we have a safer meeting on the tenth, so let's move to.
Probably the eleventh or the twelfth. And I got planning, planning on the ninth. You have a East Jellic, uh, public information meeting the night of the tenth too, that Tuesday.
Alright, I'd say eleventh or twelve.
That is, you wanna do it on Friday?
No, not Friday the thirteenth.
Oh, Friday.
So eleventh or twelfth at six o'clock? Eleventh or twelfth at six?
Eleven, let's take eleven. Uh, so that's gonna be the eleventh at six o'clock, October, uh, in parentheses, no Keith. That's a seat open. I mean, chief, you can sit up here now. Are any of these open seats?
Are you still gonna send them the invite though?
You can come on down, grab a Jimmy John's. They let, uh, they let two people go at Jimmy John's, cause they found out he was retiring. I was like, I was there the other day, she was crying her eyes out. I don't know his name, but he comes here all the time.
Once a week.
What number do you get?
Oh, I'm a number five. I'm a, I'm a veto. I'm, I'm the on which. You do the bread or you do the lettuce? I mean, it doesn't look like it, but I do the lettuce. I might as well not even care, right? Just do the goddamn bread. God, I keep forgetting.
Yeah, but then you can do chips.
Oh, yeah, no, I do a pickle. And I just cry.
So then you wanna verify. And then you got another one on the, well, got a budget on. Of October, I mean, October eleventh at six o'clock. And then we have the regular board meeting on the sixteenth. And then were you gonna have another one on the thirtieth?
I don't, we'll have to see.
Is tourism on that, on October two? Is it gonna be the last one? Yeah, it will, okay.
We'll have to see how our agenda looks. If, if the eleventh goes really well. We are still up in the air on the eleventh. We might postpone tourism another month.
Okay.
It's just tourism takes up quite a bit of time or else it's a different day.
No, I agree. I agree.
It's just not a lot of time before the board meeting.
Okay.
The thirtieth is just tentative.
Yeah, I'm hoping. We didn't need it last year, so hopefully we don't need it again this year.
I just wanna make sure I got it. Okay, I guess there's, uh, no resolutions or ordinances coming up. So, um, I'd like a motion to adjourn the finance committee.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Uh, motion, uh, closed session is done, so. Items next meeting date, October fifth or sixth. Uh, we just decided that, right? Um, future meetings, right for budget, remarks from staff. Uh, remarks from staff, anything from staff? Remarks from committee members. Or, uh, but, or, uh, board members, I think, no.
I, yeah, can we, can we add this to our list? Of stuff to take a look at, whoever.
Yes, changing the ordinance to.
You're saving every cat.
Have the ordinance.
I can, cause I already read.
So we also have to, uh, we have to request, uh. That a non, non-dog stray service contract be placed on the agenda as well.
I can forward it to her.
Okay, committee and board, any announcements? Like to announce that, uh, this is Keith's last meeting? Man in red.
Tomorrow? Can't schedule, I guess we can't schedule.
We could schedule, if you want one, we could schedule one seven o'clock at night, something like that. We might still be here. So.
I do appreciate everything that was, uh, done today. We had a motion, uh. I know that some, the board was involved in helping to.
Tomorrow, uh, is it a surprise? Is it a surprise? Okay, so tomorrow we have, uh, cake and ice cream and any Oreos left? Seriously? Quiet, don't tell anybody. Alright. Yeah, no, I, I, I will not be eating any. Um, so yeah, you're all welcome in to join at three o'clock and three till when? We have our clothes? Is there shuttles over to Dale's or how does this work? You, you have a parade? You kidding? They're gonna do a parade up the Merrill? Where they play, where they play?
Hortonville.
What color is Hortonville?
Red and white, I believe.
Oh, you can't wear red, you gotta wear. Yeah. What are they now? Five and, five and one, six and one? I didn't know that.
Yeah, he said, cause his son wants to ride in it.
Tom's gonna be driving a, like a, one of our trucks though.
We invited everyone to our house on Jellic. If you need directions, let me know, but she is hosting, uh. Football party.
Isn't it Corner House on Jellic and Longview?
Correct.
Yeah.
Which, which one? I can't think which one. Oh, the brown one, okay, I know where this, yeah.
She always has a homecoming, cause you watch trade there.
Right there. Yeah, it's right there.
She's done that for you.
Well, good for her. Alright, uh, hearing anything else? Uh, motion to adjourn? A move by, uh, Barb.
Second.
Second by Steve. Anymore on the question, hearing none? We are adjourned at, uh, eight twenty-seven.